Building. Oh, I hope our meeting. I got the sense that we're not going much.
Yeah, we won't. Well, it's just.
I saw everyone get like.
I know.
Want me there? I guess he already has a quorum.
I don't think I really need it. I don't think I need my, um.
Yeah, exactly.
A friend's mom, please, a parent in it, plus a bunch of friends from high school. And Santa's gonna be there. It's like.
Like, like, three days later. Like, I put, "Happy Thanksgiving, December 1st," like. Appreciate you. Love and thank.
Get so much up on your feed and then.
Yeah, no, I hate when you, like, I don't understand, like, how I can get feed. Exactly. And then, like, something I would be concerned about, like.
Yep, test. Does that sound okay? Like, really, this isn't unclear, and you would be shocked at how much this stymies me.
Are we getting an update on the incident that happened today with the students?
I wasn't planning to do that. It's not on the agenda.
No, it's not. It's not on. That's why I was asking.
Are you all set, my friend?
You did get an email, though.
Is everybody all set?
Yeah, I did get.
And I'll address it in the flash.
All right.
All right, which is tomorrow.
I will call the meeting to order, and I would start off with asking if you're able to join me for the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public, voters, and fans, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will turn it over to the superintendent for student showcase.
Okay. Our first item tonight is a student showcase of the MIAA Student Ambassadors. Tonight, I've asked Nathan Donahue, and I believe Athletic Director Ryan Sylvia will be along to join us. But while we're waiting for him, Nathan, if you could tell us a little bit about what the MIAA Student Ambassadors Group is, I think that would be great for the community to hear.
So, um, to start off, so my position is, um, in the Student-Athlete Advisory Council. What that consists of is captains and leaders throughout the athletic community that are come together to discuss certain items that needed to be discussed for upcoming seasons or seasons they had, what we can improve on as, as a community. And, um, so my position is, as a student ambassador, is that I'm the connection and, like, the connecting point between the Athlete Advisory Council, the public, and the school. So, um, something that we focus on mainly is, like, different types of fundraisers for the community, and that goes mainly through the athletics and then into the rest of the school. So, um, one of the things we just came from was, uh, we did the sock fundraiser. Um, we ended up fundraising, uh, we had almost, almost, over 300 pairs of socks that, um, me and Izzy got to, who couldn't make it tonight. But, um, me and Izzy, on Tuesday, personally delivered them to the Conway House, um, which was great. It was awesome being able to go and come in with a big old box of over 300 pairs of socks. And it was, um, it was a really good experience to be able to help out with the community. And really, we take that and we look at the success rate and how much we are getting from this and how much participation is, and then we can decide on what upcoming fundraisers we want to do and what we want to bring back to the school.
Thank you, Nathan. So, the Conway House, for those of you in the community who aren't familiar, is a homeless shelter. So, this is an opportunity for students to lead and lead in fundraising, but also, um, in the care and, and, um, concern for the, for the community, the greater community. So, I'll ask Ryan Sylvia if you want to come to the, um, table and talk a little bit, not just about student ambassadors as a program, but some initiatives that we can expect to hear from this group going forward.
Thank you. Thanks for having me tonight, uh, school committee members, Mrs. Lyons and Nate. Nice job. So, this group, uh, we have two student ambassadors. Uh, each school is eligible to, um, have two student ambassadors represent their school at the state level. Uh, but we also have a broader, uh, leadership group of, we call the Student-Athlete Advisory Council. Uh, and it's made up of, uh, basically a delegation of captains, uh, team leaders, uh, for all of the sports, for all of the sport seasons, for the fall, winter, and spring. One initiative that we just recently talked about, I don't, I, sorry, I walked in a little bit late. We had a Booster Club meeting. I don't know if Nate brought it up, is a Diversity Equity and Inclusion Summit at Holy Cross, uh, through the MIAA. That's just the facility that it will be at. Uh, and we're looking to have some student athlete leaders, along with some coaches, attend that conference. And basically, just looking, um, you know, participating in some concurrent sessions, uh, and learning about the various issues. And bringing those, bringing, um, some leadership tech, techniques back to our teams, back to our school. So, that's something that we're looking to do in January. We're also talking about, uh, having another collection of hats and gloves, uh, mittens, things like that, uh, for the Conway House, for our local shelter, um, to try to help. Uh, we felt like, uh, when meeting with the students, that everybody kind of has, um, you know, an extra hat or an extra pair of gloves that maybe they don't use anymore, that we can wash and, and make a, uh, donation. So, those are just a couple of the things that we're working on currently. This group has a standing meeting, um, every other week, uh, on, on Thursday afternoons. We meet maybe 15, 20 minutes after school. And really, it's an opportunity for the student athletes to have a voice in how the athletic department's run, um, have a say, um, bring new ideas, and a connection between the students, the coaches, the administration. And also, um, really just, uh, a chance to have an impact on, on how we run things. So, uh, they also, some of these student athletes sit on the executive board with student council. So, they have that connection with, uh, our principal, Mr. Branigan, and, uh, the entire student council. So, it kind of comes full circle and brings all these student leaders together, um, so we all can get on the same page. We're working on some of the theme nights, um, for the, the fall, uh, the winter season right now with, um, you know, the students will organize themselves and what they're gonna, you know, wear to support the, uh, athletic teams at the hockey games, the basketball games, whether it's a black and orange night, uh, or a holiday theme or things like that. So, those are just some of the things.
Great, thank you. So, I just wanted to point out that Nathan Donahue, um, who is a 12th grader, and also Elizabeth Wheeler, our Grade 11, are our two MIAA Student Ambassadors. And, um, I wanted to congratulate you and hopefully bring you back later this year so we can talk, you know, a little bit more about how this year goes. So, any questions?
Questions?
Just a comment. Thanks for doing that. That's so cool. And, and thanks for all the work that you're doing too, um, Sylvia, for, for putting all this together.
My pleasure.
I do want to chime in on that. Having had a student ambassador in my family both four years ago, which seems a long time ago to me, um, I do know what you do, Ryan, to work with the kids and to take them around and to make it so that they can participate. And I really appreciate all the work that you do for that and how much you value that, that ability and that role for them to have. So, I appreciate that.
My pleasure.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Nate. Next up, we have, uh, recognition.
Yep, and I'll invite Paul Branigan and Patrick Brady up to the table. They are here tonight to talk about the Sachem Pride Foundation sponsorship. And I'll let Mr. Branigan give the community a, a description. And then welcome your questions.
Hi, everyone. Good evening, and, um, it's really, um, quite special to be able to come here to the school committee and, of course, to the community to, um, just really give a thank you to the Sachem Pride Alumni, Alumni Foundation. And, um, Patrick Brady, who Superintendent Lyons had introduced, is a member of the Class of 2005. And, of course, Joe Ferguson, who's the Class of 2000, um, who are part of the Board of Directors for Sachem Pride. The reason why that I'm here is that, um, as you know, that anytime we receive a donation, it needs to come through all of you as an acceptance of that donation. And so, back in the spring, the Sachem Pride Alumni Foundation reached out to me, and they had identified, um, a, an amount of money that would be available for teachers to apply for in terms of mini-grants. And so, teachers from around the high school applied for programs and activities that they really thought would accentuate their programs or create a really cool opportunity for students. And so, I just wanted to take a minute, and just if I may, because I had reached out to all of the teachers who had received a grant, and to be able to share with you actually what they've been, what their vision was with the grant. And so, the teachers would apply for an opportunity to receive that grant, and then, of course, Sachem Pride would meet and go over the applications and then award the grants to be able to be, to be done. And so, I wanted to make sure that it was coming to you as a committee to not only thank the Sachem Pride for the support of the high school and its students and its staff, um, but also, um, to make sure the fact that, um, we could celebrate Sachem Pride on really what, um, our teachers have done. So, um, one is that, um, Tony QPR Innovation Lab Coordinator had applied for a grant in conjunction with the Speech and Theater Workshop, um, to build a, taking the money that was donated as a project, working with students in the Innovation Lab, as well as the theater students, um, to be able to build a movable stage that would provide a space in the future of the Black Box, to be able to provide certain programming. That, right now, it just has the cement floor, but to be able to have a movable stage that you could do certain kind of programs inside the Black Box, it became a partnered activity between the two groups. And so, a thank you on behalf of Tony QP. Adam Pelletier, um, our TV production teacher, um, the money that, um, he was allocated on behalf of his students allowed for, um, his students to participate in the move competition. It allowed for us to be able to transport the students to that event, um, and so to be able to make sure the fact that every student in the TV production program could participate in that. Our peer leaders through our World the Difference Program, um, which is now called Rise Up, as a part of our clubs and organizations, um, that this is our group that was the, um, came out of our World the Difference training with the Anti-Defamation League. And that they really are, um, excited because the money that they've been allocated was to kind of do some branding for their group in terms of T-shirts for themselves, as well as actually being able to attend a conference in March of this year called the Connections Conference with, um, with students from all over Massachusetts. This will be the second time we've been able to do this event, um, since COVID, and, um, we're really quite excited to be able to send that delegation. Kylie Bowen applied on behalf of really looking at mental health here at the high school, and the fact that, um, with the health grant that it would hope to utilize to assist additional professional development for all staff to better educate themselves on tiered interventions, trauma-informed classrooms, as well as provide resources, um, for psychologists and for the, um, school counselors. Of really trying to do programming and organic experiences for the staff to really give them more tools in their toolbox and to be able to work with our students. Um, and the, and the last one that I just think is just so cool is Mrs. Phillips, our librarian, that she has run a book club for many, many years. And in the book club, the way that would work is the only way that you could get a book is if you had a library card. And then they would have to go to the library, get the book from the library, and be a part of that. Well, if you didn't have a library card, you couldn't get a book. And with this grant, it allowed for that, any student who wanted to be part of the book club didn't need a library book anymore, because they would all get a book that would be able to be a part of that. So, the students come together, they are choosing the book in the book club that will become the Book of the Month, and then ultimately, all of the members get that book. And I just want to read to you one thing, because there was a student who actually had reached out about actually the, the, the experience of that. The student said, "It's meant a lot to have a book club, to have the ability to keep the books after, because reading has always been a comfort place for me. Having a place for open discussion with people that generally are interested in the same thing has been a wonderful community for me and all of my peers to go to after school." And so, this is just a sample of the many things that Sachem Pride has done, but I thought it was important to take an opportunity tonight to really thank Sachem Pride for what they have done for our school and will continue to do, and just ultimately to bring this wonderful donation to the school committee. Thank you.
I, uh, am, uh, thankful to be here and, and, uh, appreciate the time that we're being allotted. I, I did not have, uh, any remarks prepared, but, uh, I think I will use the opportunity to, uh, make everyone aware who's watching that, uh, we, we are looking to grow. Uh, I would direct folks to, uh, sachempride.org if, uh, if they wanted to learn more about the organization and, uh, what we're trying to accomplish, which is, you know, uh, primarily promoting, uh, vitality and, and doing what we can to support the continued, uh, excellence that, uh, the Middleborough High School and Middleborough Public Schools, for that matter, um, you know, have, have been. And I think, uh, I'm super grateful for having, uh, great educators in, in my life. I'm, I'm sure Joe would echo those sentiments, and, uh, it's the least we can do. So, uh, we're, we're thankful for the folks that, that do donate, that, that make this possible. I know our event schedule has been, uh, perhaps lackluster, uh, since COVID. I think that definitely changed the world, and then a lot of the board members decided to have children. So, uh, I, I do look forward to returning to a more, uh, normal or regularly scheduled, uh, event calendar throughout the year. But in the meantime, we've been, uh, successful in getting donations from alum and are, are happy to give back to, uh, a school that gave us so much.
Well, on behalf of the Middleborough Public Schools, I wanted to say thank you. It is the definition of giving back to one's community, to be part of the Sachem Pride Foundation, and then give this generous donation to allow, as you just heard, not just learning within, but expanding the programming we provide for our students, just so the committee understands the donation was $6,115, which is a very significant amount. So, I wanted to make sure we said thank you in a very pointed fashion.
You're welcome, and we just want to thank the faculty for not only their applications, but having, um, I guess, innovation being, uh, a major part of their applications. They are trying to, uh, change for the better, and, uh, that's definitely kind of like an underlying factor, is we want innovation. And our work right now with Mr. QP is extremely exciting, and we're looking to grow in that direction as far as working with the students, working with the administration, working with the faculty. And, um, you know, really, the, the key piece is connecting them to the community.
Thank you.
Rich.
I wanted to take issue with one thing you said. It is not the least you can do. You are doing a lot. People, you could do a lot less, and I really appreciate everything you're doing, just hearing about all of the, the, the ways that you've touched the school system as far as, and so, just thank you so much for everything you guys are doing.
Very welcome.
I, I do want to say thank you too, but also point out that when you hold events, I think I've been to most of your events. They are fun times, and, um, I know a lot of the alumni appreciate getting together and being able to have conversations with each other at various times. So, I thank you guys for putting that together, the whole group. I think you guys do a wonderful job, and I know, time and time again, Paul's presented to us about the money, money amounts that you've given, and I know you guys have been here in the past too. So, I appreciate everything that you've done.
We'll hope to see you again soon.
And Nate, I would suggest you join as soon as you graduate.
I was kind of, it's in the back of the head now, and ready for it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Does anyone wish to comment on something not on tonight's agenda?
I just realized that at the last meeting, I didn't take a moment to thank Hannah Bradley, who was brought in as kind of the long-term sub for, um, kind of co-teaching with Mrs. Duggan until she passed, and the work that she did with the theater students on She Kills Monsters. In addition to the work she did in the class, um, she really made the experience more than just learning lines and learning blocking. They did real, a lot of really strong work in theater foundations and acting techniques and character development. And I just thought that for somebody who's sort of fresh out of earning her degree, she really connected with the students, and she was just such a, um, an excellent person for them to have, and it was such a difficult transition, difficult experience for her to go through personally with her own connection. But she did so much to make it easier for the students who also lost Mrs. Duggan, and I just wanted to publicly, um, recognize her for what she did. And, uh, I know that she's still kind of around as a, a sub option in the school system, but I think that she really made such a, such a significant impact on those students in the few months that she had with them. And then I also just wanted to mention, um, wonderful to have Mr. Sam Mosher now officially back to Middleborough as the new permanent, hopefully, theater teacher. And just on a personal note, I happened to attend the, um, superintendent's listening session on Monday, and as I was leaving, I ran into Sam, and it was his first day. But he said, "I hate to ask, I know it's last minute, but all of the decorations for the holiday concert are very Christmas. Do you happen to have anything that we could use to make it a little more inclusive?" And for him to have passed by me randomly and to have thought of it just made such a, a significant impact on me personally, and I'm just really grateful that he had that care to make it a more inclusive experience for my family, um, attending the holiday concert last night. So, thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one else, I will move on. Reports from school committee members. Does anyone have anything they wish to say? Rich, go ahead.
I, um, effective at the end of this meeting, I wanted to announce that I am stepping down from my position on school committee. In August, my wife, Chelsea, uh, had a stroke and had to have brain surgery to fix it, and we got super lucky that she is almost back to 100%, um, except for some little things. And I kind of thought that her and I were indestructible, at least for a little while, even though my knees might, um, have said otherwise, but we're not. And the reality is that this could have been a moment where this could have been the end of our normal. If that happened right now, I would not be proud of the effort that I have put into my family, and I would have had incredible guilt and despair at the ratio of time that I spent on public service versus time spent with my family while we're still healthy. My dad died suddenly without warning at age 64, and I never got to say goodbye, and I don't think life really gives you too many warning shots. I have, uh, enjoyed five years of service to Middleborough Boards and Committees, but I feel like I have been shortchanging my family life, uh, as a trade. And I came to this conclusion fairly soon after my wife, uh, came back from the hospital, but I did feel strongly about finishing, uh, open work that I had on this committee. And, um, one of those things that I wanted and wanted to finish before the end of my term, uh, before the end of my time here was the Superintendent Goals Subcommittee. And, um, I'm very happy that we were able to present that, uh, at the last meeting, and I think now it's time for, um, me to recalibrate and reorder my priorities. And I think it's time for someone else to sit here. Um, I wanted to thank my fellow committee members, um, for their time and their, uh, collaboration and for their own sacrifice and commitment to the, to Middleborough. I, I think that it has been probably the pleasure of my life to serve on this committee with all of you. We didn't always agree, all of us, but I think the one thing that I am so certain of is that everyone that's sitting up here is completely and totally dedicated to Middleborough, Middleborough Public Schools, and Middleborough students, and I am super proud to be a part of that with you guys. While talking about being proud, I wanted to say that I am so proud of the work that this committee has done. We don't operate in, as individuals on this committee. We operate as a committee, and I'm very proud of all the things that we have done. And I just wanted to thank all of you for all of your time, and, uh, I wanted to just tell you how proud I am to have sat next to all of you. And, and Miss Lyons and Miss Hickey, the same is true for you as well. So, at the end of this meeting, um, I will be stepping down, and I so appreciate this opportunity that Middleborough gave me. Thank you.
Teresa.
Well, thank you, Rich. Uh, we met for, probably about five years ago at Hannaford.
Hannafords, yep.
And, um, you, you just introduced yourself and asked me to sort of, you know, give you some time to speak about what you wanted to do for this community. And I think through those past few years, some of them I sat on the committee with you and some I, I watched from afar, and while we certainly did not always agree, um, I think that, that actually makes us stronger as a committee. I think that it makes us challenge our own thinking at times, so I appreciate that from you, um, and I, I certainly wish you well in your future endeavors, and I'm, I know we'll see each other. So, um, thank you for your time, and, um, it is appreciated.
Thank you, Teresa.
Good, see.
So, that was really hard for me to hear, because that came out of the blue a little bit. Thank you so much for everything that you've done. I know that when I started, I had no idea where to start, and you were. had no idea where to start, and you were my mentor. And you will always be my mentor. So thank you so much for everything.
You got it.
Go ahead, Meg.
I'm going to talk to you after because I will cry.
So I just want to say thank you, Rich, on behalf of the board and behalf of everything you've done. You and I have worked together a lot over a wide variety of different things. And so I appreciate you. And, you know, this was a tough conversation, and you and I had it together. And as I told you, when we first started this conversation, it's always about family and family's first. And that's the most important thing. And I appreciate that you made that choice. And I don't, I'm not a person who's going to sort of tell you, don't do that, or tell you, don't do things. You know, I've told you over and over again, it's about what feels good in your heart. And I appreciate that. I appreciate the fact that you always listened and learned, and tried to sort of find out things in the way that you always would. You know, sometimes meetings took a little longer because you had 105 questions, but that's neither here nor there. But I do appreciate you, you asking the questions and being able to spend time and listen. And, but you know, I will miss you on this committee. And, but I know I won't miss you because I'll see you throughout everything else we do together. So I appreciate that.
Thank you.
So thanks.
I'll just say thank you, same sentiment. I mean, we haven't worked together long, but I mean, no one can question your work to this community and the school community. So thank you. And, you know, I wish your family well. And family is the most important. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Oakley. You know, I, I share the sentiment of the rest of the committee, of course. I think it's easy to forget that school committee members are not paid employees. And the commitment that you all show is evident. And it was especially evident over the last two and a half years. So, as I told you, I think this community owes you a thank you. Of course, the committee didn't always agree. That's, that's life. That's town governance. And it's actually how it's supposed to run. But I think it's important to say thank you when people spend their time for the benefit of our students. So I will miss you, and I thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Good sir.
I want to thank you. I know I'm going to be goofy about this, but thank you for your patience with me. We spent a lot of time on budget subcommittee, and it's thousands and thousands of lines of data. And anytime we had any type of data, you embraced it and studied and did your homework and asked the right questions to ask. And I really appreciate that because it helped with the budget process. So, I know you weren't on budget subcommittee this year, but the, the budget subcommittee work is hefty, and I appreciate all the work that you did.
Thank you.
So, again, thank you, Rich. And I will, if no one else has anything they wish to say, I'm going to move on to Nate. So Nate, go right ahead.
Sorry, man. Give me a second here. Okay. All right. So, first of all, I didn't get to say thank you, but I want to say thank you. Obviously, coming in, this is my first year. I think you were one of the first people when I walked up on stage to introduce yourself, give me a handshake, and, like, had open arms when I came in here, and said, and you said, if I need anything, let you know. And that your open arms, and it was, I'm very thankful for you being so accepting when I came into here and for my new position. So I want to say thank you for everything you've done. Okay. So, now on to my report. So, starting with the MECC, there's a lot of fun stuff happening at the MECC, the Festival of Lights, holidays around the world, the Jingle Bell Jog, the Polar Express, and visits to see Miss Amanda at the Middleborough Library. And everyone is super excited about the holidays and the upcoming vacation. So, for the MKG, the Holiday Shop was a huge success, thanks to our PTA and all of our volunteers that made this happen for our students. Our students enjoyed their grade-level sing-along songs this week. Our second-year band students performed for our MKG Town Meeting on Wednesday. We're excited for STEM next week. And we have lots of activities and challenges planned, such as bridge building, catapult building, and building towers. Solving engineering designs, challenges involves highly effective learning strategies, including a project-based and hands-on learning. By learning the engineering design process, students build their problem-solving skills, skills that transfer to other disciplines, including math and science. And we want to wish everyone in the Middleborough community a happy, healthy holiday season. For the HBV, things are going well at the HBV. Just wrapped up our Holiday Shop and the Scholastic Book Fair, and both events were a huge success. We have had Jay Manquita from Playful Engineers here all week, working with classes on engineering and science, as each student is getting the opportunity to explore and build their own rube goldbird machine. We are really looking forward to next week, which is our annual STEM Week. We have presenters from all, from all over coming, both in person and remotely, to work with the kids on science, math, technology, and engineering-related topics, including Mr. Rich Oakley, who is going to work with the kids on 3D printing. And we have a group from Mad Science coming, and the kids will be participating in a number of design challenges throughout the week. And lastly, we are looking forward to wrapping up the week with our annual holiday sing-along. So, for the Nichols Middle School, the PTA hosted the Winter Carnival last week on Friday, December 9, and there were about 200 students that attended. So thank you to all the volunteers who took time out of their day to support our students. And we also appreciate all of the donations from the families. Next week, the Nichols Middle School has their Spirit Week, sponsored by the Student Council and Builders Club. The Annie musical rehearsals have been underway, and the shows will take place on Friday, January 27, and Saturday, January 28, 2023. The next chess club meeting will be on January 4. Winter intramurals recently started, and there's basketball on Mondays and volleyball on Wednesdays. So finally, for the MHS, congratulations to the Key, congratulations to the Key Club for an outstanding job with the planning of the annual Eat to Heat event last Wednesday evening. Thank you to all the members of the band and concert choir for the performances during the dinner. Congratulations to all of our fall athletes who celebrated an amazing season at our annual Fall Sports Awards Night on the same Wednesday evening. Special congratulations to Kaylee Almeida for her participation in the Massachusetts Educational Theater Guild Excellence in Tech Theater Contest last weekend at Norwood High School. And then congratulations to our AP Science students, who hosted the AP Saturday Session at MHS on Saturday morning, for the AP Science students from around our region. A special thank you to the MHS band for bringing their music to the assisted living facilities in Middleborough over the weekend. A job well done. A congratulations to the Middleborough High School Fine Arts Program for having an amazing holiday concert on Tuesday, the 13th. It was really good to hear. The Students, Student Council Annual Holiday Party is being held on Wednesday, December 21, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. for Student Council members. And then finally, I want to say a special thank you to everyone that participated in the Sajum Santa Toy Drive. Everyone's help is greatly appreciated and does not go unnoticed.
Any questions for Nate?
Just, just a comment. Thank you so much for always pulling these things together. I may still tune in to listen to your, your updates. Also, about the STEM Week, I think this is the coolest thing that we do around here. I mean, I'm, I'm a little biased. But, but also, I can't wait to be here next week. But I think in that update, it said Rich Oakley was going to be doing it. But I'm going to be joined by a bunch of other people too. Middleborough's own Earl Geddon, who's in the IT department, but who is also a huge Borough Bot volunteer and will be helping us 3D printing. And Chris Van, who owns Central Square Computer Repair, but also is a founding member of Borough Bot. And we're going to have a lot of fun with some 3D scanning and some 3D printers. Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome. And I just want to say, like, growing up with the whole STEM program, I was in love with it from the moment I saw it. So I know that these students are going to take this in every which way possible, and that they're going to love it. And I know it's, they're going to have a great time. Because I know I did, and I'm sure plenty of other students will as well.
Thank you, Nate. Appreciate it. And I'll turn it over to the superintendent for the superintendent.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the school committee. Tonight, I'm going to be reporting out on a couple of items. I do think I need that projector to be turned on because I have my PowerPoint. While we're getting that set up, I'll ask for Mr. Jim Hutchinson to come to the table. The first item I have to report out on you is an update on the School Street School Project. As I told you this summer, and I believe this fall, I think I presented a couple of times, maybe it was last spring and this summer, actually. I don't think it was this fall. I presented some information about why we were doing this project. But now that it has, now that it has already, now that we're underway, I can give you a better report. I don't see my slides on the screen. There we go. I brought some pictures. And also, Mr. Hutchinson, who is really the backbone of the entire project, that's actually where I wanted to start. There we go. Was a thank you to, to Mr. Hutchinson, Director of Facilities, and his entire, his entire facilities team. You know, they, they've really been at this since July. They hit the ground running on this project. They haven't complained a single time. And a lot of hours have gone into the improvements in, in this facility. They started, as I said, right in, right in July, shortly after we, you know, had, had agreement to move forward. And we are anticipating our first moves into the building over December break, on December 29, I believe is the date, with our PPS office. The first floor, by reminder, will house the Pupil Personnel Services Office, the Registrar slash Technology Office, the Director of Special Education, and the Director of Curriculum and Instruction. So while these tenants are moving in, work is going to be continuing on that second floor. On this, oops, I'm really terrible with this thing, huh? The second floor will house the Director of Student Services, the Superintendent's Office, and the Professional Development Center. That's still underway as we speak. The second floor moves are anticipated roughly in February of next year, arguably during the break period again, because that's when it makes most sense to close offices down. And work will be ongoing as moves occur. So improvements, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Hutchinson in just a couple minutes, but I want to kind of briefly go over the improvements that were made, which include flooring and lighting, walls where, you know, there were, you know, pieces on the wall that needed to come down, and beadboard that was put up, paint, bathroom upgrades, there was a new boiler installed, heating and cooling for the rooms, wiring for technology, and paving. There are improvements still to come, which include signage that I'll be coordinating with the MyLab to provide, to provide using that laser cutter, and, you know, really trying to get some student fingerprints on the project. Furniture, stamped concrete out front, which is really, you know, in keeping with the historic preservation of the building, security cameras to make sure that our facility is in fact secure. And then some light landscaping. I don't think it'll be heavy hardscaping, but landscaping and maintenance that I'll be coordinating with the Youth Works Program through Joshua Porter and other members of the administration. This is a program where students can actually get paid to complete work and get some hands-on experience. As I told you, it was important for me when this started to make sure that students had a place in the program and saw this as their building too. While they won't, you know, be in the building per se, it's still, I mean, the whole reason all of us are here are the students. So I thought that part was particularly important. So by way of review, I'm going to show you where we started. And if you see, this is what the walls looked like. You can see the lighting needed upgrading, the floor, you know, there were several upgrades that were needed. This is kind of a rough look at what we were, that actually reflects the, the first floor being pulled up, because there was flooring in there. As you know, we had tenants prior. But as you can see, this is an example of one of the rooms with the new flooring, the new, the, you know, wall kind of being restored, the lighting. What you see on the right-hand side is actually the front doorway, which shows you kind of some upgraded paint, and just, you know, a nice welcoming space. This building will be a place for our families. When they're coming to register their children for the first time, this is the door they'll use. This is the experience they'll have. Here's another photo of some of the offices. We had to, you know, the, the space was used as a collaborative program. So there was some degree of, you know, re, retooling of the spaces. But as you can see, they're, they're pretty, you know, laid out spaciously. There will be meeting space in each room. And this is the hallway, which I hope you can see the historic beauty really being maintained. Those, those floors are gorgeous. And we haven't, you know, and we, when I look at a hallway like this, and, you know, you ask yourself what's going to go on that wall, what I'd like to do, and I've actually spoken with Principal Brannigan about this, is getting my hands on some historical artifacts of this town in order to showcase the history of Middleborough in this building. It very much is a piece of living history, and I think that its decor should, should reflect that. And the double bonus is that we have pieces like that. It doesn't cost the district a thing. And I think it's the right thing to do. So with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Hutchinson for not just questions, but maybe a little more detail about what this project has been.
Thank you, Ms. Lyons, School Committee. Rich Oakley, thank you for your dedication to the schools. Much appreciated. You were correct, we are moving, December 28, actually. We have the movers scheduled. So PPS will move into their space. It's ready for them now. But they'll move in 100% as will curriculum. I believe Kevin Abbott Tably will move into that space temporarily. And it, more than likely, we're going to see Katie Goodine move into her space as well. So, three of the four spaces on that floor will be done for the return January 3. And then we'll stage upstairs. And as Ms. Lyons mentioned, we'll, it'll be a construction zone while they're there, but they'll be pretty much isolated. They can close their doors, and we'll try to keep it as quiet as we can. We've got a new custodian in that building. He was a custodian in the district, Ron Leonard. He's done a great job over there. He's there every day, as is Cindy DiStefano, who's doing a lot of our painting. It's been a huge help to the maintenance department because we've kind of been spread thin around the district with the beginning of the heating season and what have you. So I can't say enough for those two who are, who are there every day. We have a couple of our interns, our summer interns, who are on holiday break. One has started already, and, and Justin Plusky, and then Matt Farley will start next Tuesday. They'll work alongside Ronnie to get that first floor completed and get us moved upstairs. So, because we have quite a bit of material, construction material that we need to relocate. The pavement, unfortunately, we ran out of a paving window. So we're on their schedule for the spring. And we have a, once that pavement goes down, then we will move forward with the stamped asphalt in the front, which will give it like a cobblestone, look very similar to what we've done here. And it's actually the same company that is doing that. So, looking forward to that. I would think that once we get upstairs, of course, you never know, we've gone a week or two where none of the maintenance department even shows up there. So it's, some days we can get in there and work eight hours, some days we don't even show up there. So, which has been a huge benefit to have Ron, Cindy, and now the two interns helping during the holiday break. And so then we can get that back room, which is actually where Jen Healy will be located, finish that, complete the first floor in its entirety. This morning, we had our gas inspection. The boiler is final. So that whole thing has been inspected, and it is online. The first floor is heated. The bathroom downstairs, the plumber's holding us up, which would be me. So, hope to have that done. It would definitely be done by the 3rd of January. But exterior, we do have some exterior painting. Obviously, the weather is not on our side right now. So we'll get that done in the spring. But the heavy lift will be probably completed and hopefully moved in February. The only, we're hoping to get Ms. Lyons in, in February. We'll see how that goes. So, I believe that's it. But any questions?
Any questions, Rich?
Not a question, just a comment. This is beautiful. So, please thank your team, and thank you for everything that you've done, because it's gorgeous.
They've done an awesome job.
I actually want to go tour it. So we could arrange that. That would be great.
Yep.
Absolutely. The question is, was, is there going to be a tour? Once everybody's in, I would really like to invite you and, you know, media to come cover. I mean, it's really a special moment. So I absolutely plan, it'll be open to the public, of course, during our hours. And people are always free to come by. Come on over and say hi.
Other questions, Rich?
Chair, yeah, thank you very much. It is so beautiful, the pictures that you showed. And, and I, I thought it just deserved a
And I thought it just deserved an extra kind of repetition on how nice of a plan this is to impact student spaces. And I remember when Ms. Lyons came to us at first, that was kind of the goal. And how nice to see it kind of coming together and to free up space in some of our other buildings for students to have a little more room. So awesome plan, fun to see it coming together, and would love to, even if maybe I'm not officially a member of the committee at that point, come see it sometime when it's done. But thank you.
Of course.
Um, Hutch, before I have you go, I have to ask a question. It has come up a couple of times at various other town board meetings about mold in the schools.
Yep.
Can you address that for us once and for all?
Yep, so we have testing district-wide seasonally, so change of season. We have a company come in and we do our testing. We do the large spaces, the auditorium, and the, they have to be a populated space, so we had our CO levels are correct. So we do, we pick certain classrooms in every school. We go there when the cafeteria is populated, so we get accurate readings there. So that is something that we've been doing for quite a while. As you remember, Rich, we had a little bit of an issue years ago at the Berklin. And since then, we've been testing about three times a year. So and those reports come back to us, and we've never had an issue with that, so.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yep, no problem at all.
One question, Mr. Hutchinson. Also, this year, the Health Department was working with the School Department to install those purple sensors, which don't test mold, but they do test air quality.
Exterior air quality, yep. So they're mounted, they're not all in place. They'll be mounted outside of every building. And they'll be, they'll send the information back to a website, and they'll just test the quality of the outside air. Not exactly, not just mold, because actually with your mold readings, your mold outside is quite a bit more than your readings in the building, so. But yes, that is through the Health Department.
The Health Department approached me about this over the fall and said, how would you feel about testing? Really, it's not something that our department controls. And the results are not only monitored by the Health Department here in town, but those results go to the state. So I jumped at the chance, because I thought that would be something that the community might be interested in. Quite honestly, it doesn't cost a dime, and it's just another measure to demonstrate that we're interested in obtaining that information. So that will be forthcoming. I'll certainly share, along with Mr. Hutchinson, any updates we have there.
Yep, so once we have all of those installed at each building, then we can monitor. I think it's available to anyone to see that information.
I'm just wondering, Mr. Hutchinson, are you asleep?
I do, yeah.
I mean, I see you, I see you when I'm here for my own kids' sporting events and whatever else. You're literally here all the time.
Quite often, yeah.
And the things that you report back on is unbelievable. So as a parent, thank you for all you do. And obviously, my son will be there working next week. So make sure you take a little break while he's working.
Fortunately, we have his uncle oversee him, so.
Great, thank you, Mr. Hutchinson.
Okay, you're welcome.
Don't go far.
Oh, yeah, you might want to stay, Mr. Hutchinson, because the next item is actually our award of contract for the pool roof replacement. So you might be handy for questions on that item, too. With that, I'll turn to Director of Business and Finance, Sarah.
Thank you, Superintendent Lyons. Is this working? Okay. I have news for you that actually begins with Mr. Hutchinson and myself submitting and a request to the Capitol Committee in the August of 2021. And then in October of 2021, in the special town meeting, the town approved funds for the Middleborough Public Schools to replace the pool roof. And moving forward, Mr., I think I've explained already a little bit on this project. Mr. Hutchinson and I were working with Westling Architects, and we went out to bid on November 10th. So the bids, all the legal portions happened. That's what I spoke about last time. But the bids were available on November 10th, and we had 25 vendors. So when the bid becomes available, people can log into our website to get to download all of the materials. There were 25 vendors from all over New England and Texas and Georgia and India. That one was new for me. I thought you'd enjoy that. I don't know how somebody in India is going to replace a roof on our pool, but they downloaded all the specifications. On December 8th, we had scheduled the bid opening. There were six bids that were submitted. They ranged in amount from $445,000 to $867,427. And the three lowest bids I then sent to the architect. Once the bid opening happens, there's a two-part process. The architect checks the references. And this is actually a very structured process, so it's not like the companies can only give us people who are going to say good things about them, because this project requires Decam certification in Massachusetts. The Division of Capital Asset Management governs the public construction projects. And so the references that are given are not just all, are not just anybody who said good things about them, but it's everybody. So the architect takes the bid and goes to work with the reference check with the other places that have had roofing, similar roofing projects done. I take the bid, and I get to work with checking on the financial piece and the bid bond that they submit. And Westling Architects, Joe St. Germain, who we work with there, got back to me yesterday. And the lowest bid, which was WPI Construction, Inc., passed all of their reference checks with him with flying colors, passed all of their reference checks with me with flying colors. So they are what we refer to as the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. And I am asking for permission to award the contract for the Middleborough Public Schools Elementary School Complex Pool Roof Replacement to WPI Construction, Inc. from Webster, Massachusetts.
Chair, I want to entertain a motion to approve WPI Construction, Inc. as the vendor selected. Do I have a second?
Let the community know what that bid was. I may have missed it.
Yeah, $445,000.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? How long will the process take?
Interestingly enough, as we know, that there are issues with supply chain. And so in the bid, we went out to bid in November to award the bid now for the work to be done at the close of school in June, beginning at the end, the close of school in June, to be complete by August 11th. So the work is to be done in the summer, when we can bring a crew in and they can take over whatever part of the parking lot they're going to need to stage their trailers or whatever a roofing company brings in.
Got it. Having gone through this from the kindergarten, which I thought would never, ever end, does it appear that gives them enough time with any problems with weather and everything like that, Hutch?
Yeah, so this roof is very basic. They'll turn this project around, probably, if they stay on it, probably in two weeks. So it's really quite simple. There are not a lot of mechanicals on the roof. There's just one fan that pulls from the space below. Everything else is just a rubber roof. So like with the Mac, it was a much more detailed roof. And this should go very quickly. So we certainly have plenty of time. I would imagine the middle of July, they would be done. So.
Other questions?
Do they bid a timeframe as well, or is that not part of their?
The timeframe, the timeframe is built into the bid package I present. So it's, I say, this is the time that you have to do the work. And the architect says this is the scope of, this is the technical piece of the work.
All right.
But it's all in the bid document, which you can access on the Middleborough Public Schools website, if you'd like.
But she'll know you did and where you were from.
Yes, I will.
Any other questions? Anybody from the audience have a question? Hearing none, there's a motion on the table to award WPI Construction, Inc. as the awardee. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Thank you, Sarah, for all your work.
And with that, I'll turn to the last item of my report, which is the school calendar as proposed for the 2024 school year. You have a draft in your Dropbox. This draft is largely unchanged from last meeting. It denotes the four full-day professional development days, two at the start of the school year, one on November 1st, one on March 13th, six early-release professional development days, starting in October and ending on the last day of school, which is slated for Thursday, June 13th. And I'll kind of turn it over to you with any questions you might have. I know this continues to be a question that has stirred up a lot of interest in the community as well.
Questions for the superintendent?
Yeah, so I believe last time, I just want to make sure that I'm clear. We were going to have Tuesday off after Labor Day, and now we're saying we're going to have school. Is that what I'm seeing? So we're, oh, wait, actually, I think we're going to start. No, yeah, so first day for kindergarten and pre-K would be the Wednesday, right? Wednesday, September 6th.
First day for 1 through 12 would be August 30th.
Right.
Then K on the 31st. And then pre-K would start the following Wednesday on the 6th.
So, but there would be school on Tuesday, September 5th?
Yes, there is, because there's no voting that day.
Right, all right. And there's no school the Friday before, like after, so September?
September 1st is also a school day.
Okay, great, okay, okay. That was one of the things that had come up, was there was, it was maybe going to be a four-day weekend. So we were, I was trying to make sure that I had that information.
Sure, and this proposal would leave Labor Day weekend as a three-day weekend. There'd be school on Friday and the Tuesday following.
And it would get us out June 13th.
Correct.
Barring any days off. Okay, all right, I'm clear on it, I like it.
This is just about like my visual perception. Can we maybe make kindergarten and pre-K different colors? Because they're the same color. Because it throws me off every time I look at it.
Yes, and kind of designate the difference between kindergarten and pre-K, sure.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Rich?
I forget if we addressed this already, but I remember there was a question that seemed like it had some real relevance around PD days. And was that, it was, can we break those into hours as opposed to full days? Was that answered already? Okay.
Can we break them into one, or days?
Rather, do they have to stay full days? And just to be clear, PD is a good thing.
Four full days.
Yep.
And the rest are part days. We can't create part days for full days.
Got it.
That's contraction.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, I wanted to point out one other shift. In the previous draft, I think we had talked about potentially testing a Wednesday rather than a Friday. And the one that had been selected was actually Valentine's Day. And so one of the questions had been, well, what about the students celebrating? And to be honest with you, after kind of hearing the community's response, or at least some of the community's response to, you know, when we start and end, I thought it would be the most prudent to present those days continuing on those Fridays in order to acknowledge, you know, the impact on families and family desire. It sounded like the Fridays were really very popular. So that is reflected in this draft.
Any other questions? Chair, would, chair put it down to take a vote? If people want to take a vote, we can. Chair would accept the motion to approve it, if people want to do that. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, discussion in the audience, seen none. All those in favor of the calendar as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous, thank you.
Thank you, and that completes my report for this evening.
Thank you very much. A couple of things. Next item is the school building project. We did have a meeting yesterday. The meeting was relatively quick. There is ongoing checklist items being taken off the list, especially during the break that's coming up. So they'll be working around the break. We did, I believe I mentioned before, there was some replacement of seating in the science labs. So we were given, the students and the teachers didn't like the current seating that we had in the labs. So we took, they're still there, because we're waiting for them to be replaced, as you can imagine. So there was multiple samples set, sent here for people to take a chance on and experiment with. And they picked it out. And Paul, I believe, I know we ordered them, but it also looks like they're reasonably in stock. And so they should be coming to us probably, oh, again, over break, and there'll be that change out then. I know there, one of the big issues was one of the elevator cards. The elevator card, which is slated to be here for the break during the winter. And so that's going to be repaired and fixed. And aside from that, the punch list items, it's unclear if we, as a group, are going to meet monthly, primarily because when we meet, we pay vouchers. And so the, our compass team has decided that it probably makes more sense to tell people, to promise people, we're not going to pay them unless they come in and do it immediately, because there's some bucket list stuff that just needs to be filled out and checked off. And if they're not going to do it, we're not going to rush to pay them. So we'll figure those out and go from there. And there's also the point where at some point, they will, they have a potential to either decide it's not that big a deal on our bucket list, and we don't need it, and we're going to take a credit off of their work, or we'll just get somebody else to do it if it doesn't fill out. So there's, I would say, most of the pieces are minor at this point, except for the two things I mentioned, which is the swap out of furniture and the reader card that we don't have anything over. So those are coming along. We're at the stage, I think I mentioned this before, where MSBA won't pay out until certain things, until the very end, for reimbursement. So everyone, certain people wouldn't get reimbursed until that point. And then we are still currently roughly about $5 million on the budget. So we're happy with that. Questions at all or anything like that? Okay. Next item I put on our agenda was simply this, that the superintendent, the business manager and I had talked, and we looked at what we have, the current pay that we pay our secretary, and viewed it in regards to how other places are paying their secretaries, and wanted to make sure our secretary has not received any significant raise in a little while. And so we have, we're recommending that she go from the $23 an hour to $25.50. And that brings her in light with lots of other things across the district. So it was something that we had worked on and came back to. So I wanted to present it tonight and ask people's thoughts. This, we have money in the budget. This is not going to affect the budget at all or in any way, shape, or form.
I mean, she does, she does a lot of work. She does, she's fantastic at what she does, so, so, yeah.
Then the chair wants to entertain a motion to raise her rate to $25.50. So moved. Do I have a second? Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. And just, since I didn't ask, she'll make it clear it's retroactive to this past year. I think I put that in the piece, but we'll go from there. So thank you very much, everybody, for that. Chair, entertain a motion to approve consent agenda.
So moved.
Do I have a second? Discussion. This is just on some fundraisers, meeting minutes, and approval warrants. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, it's unanimous. I think we took care of all our action items. Like to point out that Hannaford Supermarket donated to the MEK. We are very grateful for that. They are another organization in town that has consistently donated over a period in time. And just so everyone knows, they gave the MEK $279 check, and we appreciate that. With that, we're at the end of our meeting. Our next meeting won't be until January 5th, 2023. Again, Rich, thank you for your service to this committee. We appreciate it. And with that, the chair wants to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion, hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you very much, everybody. Happy holidays and happy new year.